Marina's video on.
I'll just scan. Councilmember Chow.
Here.
Councilmember Sinks.
Is Rod not here anymore?
No, he's muted.
Oh, sorry. I'm here.
Councilmember Willie.
Councilmember Willie.
Here. I'm not muted.
Okay, we hear you now. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Paul.
Vice Mayor Paul, are you there?
Yes, I responded. I'm here.
Okay.
Mayor Sharp.
I am here. Okay, welcome everyone. Kirsten, is there anybody for oral communications before we start the only agenda item?
I do have an email to read.
Okay.
On behalf of BG, let's see. I believe this is for oral communications. Dear councilmembers, on April, on the April 7th meeting, the city manager provided a brief summary on financial impact due to COVID-19 and stated more information will be provided on the April 21st city council meeting. However, the city did not provide the details yesterday. When the city's 80-plus employees have been furloughed, the public should know what city services are impacted due to this action and how the city is taking care of its employees. More details should be provided on the shortfall of revenues and mitigation plans for current fiscal year. And next, city, the city of Campbell had an agenda item yesterday on receive an update on initial fiscal and budgetary impacts due to COVID-19 and provide staff with feedback regarding recommended strategies in fiscal year FY 2019-2020 and FY 2020-2021 to address those impacts. The report presented by them is very detailed and informative and provides transparency on the current state of their city's finances and the plans to mitigate this unprecedented crisis. I would appreciate if the city of Cupertino brings a detailed report on April 28th. This would enable the public and council members to have a clear picture on the city's finances and the council can deliberate and provide guidance to the city staff. Attached is the initial fiscal and budgetary impacts due to COVID-19 from the city of Campbell. Thanks, BG.
Okay, very good. Anybody else?
I see no hands on the callers.
Okay, so we are on to the only item on the agenda. This is potential emergency order requiring face coverings for the public to slow the spread of COVID-19. So can we have a staff report?
Yes. First, on the city's impact report, I'll be issuing that to the city council, a little bit delayed. I was gonna try and post it today, but it's not quite ready. So give me a little more time on that. And then we are bringing this item back as the number one item for the April 28th special city council session. I wanted to leave most of the time for discussion. So if I could point the city council to the staff report, the latter part of the section, I'm just gonna summarize the previous part, which is that Cupertino's face covering order, the draft, is definitely aligned with all the other county orders and is also in line with the guidance provided by our own Santa Clara County. The only difference, there are only two differences with the Cupertino recommended order. Many, if not all, of the other county orders call for a violation of the mandate for face coverings as a misdemeanor. And what I've done is made it more administrative citation with a focus on education and handing out or distributing disposable masks, masks or face coverings that were donated to the city for this purpose. The second main difference is that while we are mandating face coverings within essential businesses and on the way to essential appointments, the second piece is that, I'm sorry, I've lost track of where I am. CDC. I am providing the discretion to the businesses should someone not be wearing a face covering in their business. Many of the other orders dictate or mandate that they refuse service to those customers, and I've left it up to the businesses to try and be sensitive to their own judgment and other mitigations that are potentially possible within their storefronts. So those are the two main differences. And again, I, there's no fiscal impact for this because we are using 20,000 face mask donation that we received the other day from a very generous donator. And we have distributed, distributed the vast majority of those masks today to all of our smaller businesses for use by their employees or incoming customers. Now, a little bit about my philosophy on this. After listening to Gavin Newsom's press conference of last Tuesday, not yesterday, but about a week ago, talking about plans to reopen his six-point, his six-point plan or set of requirements, I felt like probably that future of being able to reopen would always involve some sort of face covering. So I just was, you know, with our increasing cases in the county and in Cupertino, we're now at 23, I think, which doesn't sound like a lot, but I'm fearful of a surge, that the use of face coverings, particularly when we go to reopen key businesses and part of the city, is gonna require wearing a face covering to prevent relapses. So that's my summary for philosophy. And I then just turn it over to public and council and anybody else who would like to make, provide input and/or make comment. Thank you.
Before we go to council, I see we have two members of the public here, Cindy Chavez, when the Board of Supervisors, and Ricardo Romero Morales. Would you two like to speak now and have your three minutes?
I think if it's okay, I wanted to be here just in case you had any questions about what the county was doing or working on. What I'd like to do is really let Ricardo Romero Morales, who's a, who's a county, a senior community health planner, be able to just share the thinking of the county and then be available for questions. And I really appreciate you letting me join you.
Okay, welcome Ricardo. So I will unmute you. Go ahead. I can't hear, I can't hear you.
He's still muted. Hold on.
No, I unmuted him. He must have his own microphone muted on his computer. We can't hear you.
What about now?
Yeah, there you go.
All right, awesome. Thank you. So, good evening. So yes, here at the Public Health Department and in Santa Clara County at the Emergency Operations Center, we're in complete agreement with the other Bay Area counties that are about face coverings that are important tool to fight transmission of COVID-19. Staying home and social distancing are still most important tools that we have. But if we do go out in public for an essential activity, face coverings are valuable method to help the reduction of the transmission of the COVID-19. Now, face covering should not be medical masks due to the shortage of PPEs that we have in the county. And we ask residents not to buy any medical masks, but rather to use a bandana or a homemade closed mask. Now, some, some counties around the Bay Area have chosen to mandate the face coverings by issuing an order. Now, Dr. Cody has decided that instead of issuing a very strong guide, has decided to issue a very strong guidance regarding face coverings. She chose the guidance rather than the order because violating of a health officer order is considered a crime and requiring, it also requires local law enforcement resources. And our view is that it's not desirable to limit the law enforcement resources to be dedicated to enforcing the face coverings order at this point. Now, we do expect and we have been seeing a strong voluntary compliance with the guidance regarding face covering. So this is as much information as we have at this point, but I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you. So we will bring it back to council now. Let's see, who would like to go first? Does anyone have any comments?
Mr. Mayor, did you want to hear from the public first?
Oh, sure. Other, okay, I'm sorry. Are there other people from the public?
We have one. Jennifer Griffin is waiting to comment.
Okay, welcome Jennifer. You have three minutes. I will unmute you. Okay. Unmute you again and again.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yeah, go.
Okay. Yes. Hi, this is Jennifer Griffin, and I'm glad you're having this discussion tonight. I will just, I just wanted to pass along that I'm, I think that we need to be very, very careful when we're dealing with our senior population because they may not fully understand what constitutes a face mask, what they are using. There's a lot of homemade masks that people are using. I've seen people using drilling equipment mask, things used for lapidary, all sorts of things. Today I saw an elderly man who had a paper, he had a mask on, and he was trying to back his car out of a parking lot at Safeway in West San Jose. He had glasses on. He, seniors have trouble turning their heads a lot of times when they're driving, and he had pedestrians behind him who weren't paying attention to cars in the parking lot. And he was, poor man, he was in front of me at the grocery store. He was trying to back his car out. He was probably 85 years old. And he had the mask on, he had glasses, and he was trying to turn his head. And I think that it had exhausted, I don't know, that's the wrong word. It, it had reached a point where unless we want to stop our seniors from driving, many of our seniors live alone. They're able to handle their day, I don't know what that noise is, but.
Who's talking?
I'm sorry, that's me. I'm gonna, okay.
Okay. They're able to handle their day-to-day situations, but, but trying to enforce, and especially too, since we cannot readily purchase these masks over the internet, we can't get a supply. I heard today that a city, someone, an employee of a Lucky's in one of the affected five counties that are requiring face masks. There was a gentleman that walked in the store with a bandana face mask. The Lucky employee told him he could not enter the store, and we know that that's wrong. So we need to make sure that if we're doing this, that our signals are not crossed up and that we're sensitive to issues that the senior population have because they may not fully understand what these masks are, that they have to be washed, et cetera. They may not even have washing machines in their homes. So I think we just need to proceed cautiously. And, and also, what about the areas of the city? If Cupertino is just doing this, what about the areas of the city that are actually counties, but are, they're actually legally in San Jose, but, but it's a Cupertino address? How are, how are you all planning on dealing with it? Thank you.
Okay, thank you Jennifer. Kirsten, was there anyone else that wished to speak from the public?
That is all, Mr. Mayor.
Great. Okay, so let's bring it back to the council. If you would like to speak, please raise your hand.
Mayor.
Okay.
Unlike.
John.
Yeah, unlike yesterday, you know, there's a raise hand button on the bottom of the screen. So this might be better for Bill. There's no, the hand isn't.
Yeah, I don't see that. So.
Me too.
So now we just have to.
Right, just raise your hand manually. Okay. Okay, go John.
So, so I'll start. Just wanna be sure that I understand what we are legally able to, to require. I like the idea of masks. This is a very important situation. I like the idea of masks. I'm just concerned that I'm not aware of what we are and are not allowed to do. If we were to mandate, you know, yellow shirts at night or something, you know, this for the city attorney, what does the law say that we're allowed to mandate?
Heather? Unmute?
Sorry, just one second. Okay, I think I'm unmuted now. Yes, the, the law gives the, the city manager in this instance, your emergency services director, the authority to adopt rules and regulations to protect public health at this time, public, public safety and lives. And so any measures that are reasonably related to doing so to help prevent the spread of COVID, she may adopt. The proposed ordinance before you now simply mirrors the provisions that other counties have adopted and, and a few other cities as well. So this is legal to require people to wear face coverings in certain circumstances.
Yeah, so my second question, and this one I think is to Cindy, thank you for joining us. I, I joined your meeting yesterday and listened. And I, I'm not hearing that the Santa Clara County Board, I didn't hear that yesterday, that they were going to require masks. And on the hierarchy, you know, there's Sacramento and Governor Newsom, and then there's the Santa Clara County Board of Supervisors, and then we're the next level down. Ricardo talked about masks, but is Santa Clara County Board of Supervisors going to institute it, or are you going to leave it to the individual cities to decide?
So what we, that's actually a really good question. Thank you for asking it. And you must be exhausted from yesterday's meeting. So thank you for joining us. The main goal that we have is making sure that we're giving directives to people, and we, we prefer that they wear masks, but we don't want to make it enforceable by law, in part because we want to diminish the amount of conflict that, that people have with, you know, with our legal professionals, I mean, our law professionals for a bunch of reasons. One of them being that we primarily want people still to be focused on high, higher issues and crimes and not having conflicts with people about face masks. The second thing is, is that we're really trying to use an education model. And it's really what your city manager talked about, which was having the ability to have conversations with people where we're able to say to them, this would be safer for you, is really what we prefer. And then the third thing that I cannot emphasize enough, but it's something that Ricardo raised, is that we do not want to create more competition for the medical grade masks. And, you know, I was showing you that I have a, I have a cloth mask that I wear that I got as a birthday present, actually, from my mom that made it. But so we're really encouraging people to do, to be educated and to do more that doesn't conflict with other goals that we have, like making sure we have enough PPE for volunteers who are handing out food or people who are working in the hospitals. So to answer your question, yeah, we're not mandating it at this time. We're highly recommending it. It's a guideline.
So then my last item would be the social distancing of six feet versus closer. If somebody like, like my wife and daughter walked the dog today, I mean, they're outside, I would question requiring, you know, at what point do we require the mask? If they're, if they're below the, or the distance is smaller than six feet or some number than requiring the mask. But if somebody's out mowing their lawn, going for a walk, they're not in close proximity, I would think that we should consider whether that constitutes mask requirement or not.
Right. And Deb, we are not requiring masks outdoors. Some cities and counties are, but, and personally, I thought it was a good idea, but, you know, I go along with Deb's recommendation that we don't require them outdoors.
That's correct.
And also, John, just to point out, the Board of Supervisors doesn't issue mask orders or face covering orders or not, not issue. And that comes from the Department of Public Health. Dr. Cody would be the one that does that. I mean, if she had chosen to do that. And also, so other count, like Alameda County, before they issued a county-wide mask requirement or face cover requirement, individual cities had been doing their own. And then, I don't know what they did once the county finally did it, if they got rid of their own or if they just have two. I don't know what that, what they actually did, like in Fremont. Okay, um, so since we can't raise our hands in Zoom, okay, Liang.
Hi. So, thank you, Deb. I think your soft approach of requiring face covering is great. I think we really need that now. I wonder if we can provide some signs that businesses can post so that they know this comes from the city order and business have less the trouble of saying, people might misunderstand, it's their own requirement. And then I think, yeah. And then also, I think it's important to educate the public about how to make face coverings or fabric masks. I think many, there are a lot of groups who are already doing it. So first thing is, can we, so thank you, Cindy Chavez, County Supervisor. Thank you for joining us and the health officers. So I wonder if we can get some information from the county about how to make, or I think CDC website has a video of a very simple face covering from bandana. But then people have been trying to make it solid. And if we can get this from the county official source, this is a safe way to do it. That would be great if we can provide that on the city website. And third thing, so third thing is, many people have made the masks. They want to donate. Some people might need them. I'm also wondering if our low-income residents might need them. So are there, could the city provide maybe a resource website people can say, I need, need masks. And some people can say, I have some to donate. Somehow, maybe assign a staff person to be a contact person to make that connection.
Yeah, we can, I can look into that. My first, my first inclination is to get some donations over to West Valley Community Services because they have access. And we wouldn't have to create another access point. But I'll, I'll look into that. To, to answer your first question, I'm sorry, Cindy.
No, no, I was just gonna say on the, if I could, on that donation front, what we'll send you is a link. It's such a good point that people want to help. So we have a link to the Valley Medical Center Foundation that's got a how-to link on it. And also, it's a place that people can donate and a place that people can access donations. And, and I think your city manager was so right that, like, West Valley Community Services is a really good example of an organization that both is in need of the, the face coverings and also even volunteers. And, you know, there's, there's, there are ways we can connect. So I'll make sure that we get to your city manager some key links that will address those issues.
Thank you. I wanted to answer also, Councilwoman, Councilmember Chow's first question was, yes, signage's, signs are going out to the, to the businesses where we are shipping the masks to. That went out today, most of them today, along with a letter from the donator, giving, connecting him to the rest of the community, which I thought was a great thing to do. In addition, we have published the Santa Clara County Public Health Bulletin, I would say, on face coverings. And it actually has a link to how to make your own face mask. So we, we've done everything we can to align up with the requirements of the county. In fact, they have several links on here, easy instructions on how to clean your face mask, how to make your own, how one is properly worn, and then just a little bit more about healthcare workers. And we definitely have adopted the whole idea of ensuring that we are not taking supplies, critical supplies from our medical professionals and healthcare workers, and really are just going towards the cloth, bandana. And these last ones, these disposable ones were actually a big donation. So thank you to our, one of our community members.
Oh, sorry, one more idea. Maybe, maybe the city can offer a webinar to teach people how to hand sew fabric masks. I think some people are reusing their t-shirt to make masks.
Yeah. I don't know what more we can offer. There's tons of webinars on how to make masks. I can certainly see if we can mask them on our website, but we're no experts either. So we could just take other sources and mask them there at our COVID website, which is the top, the top hit in our community. So we've done everything we possibly can and, you know, again, lining up with other county, including Santa Clara, Santa Clara County.
Okay, thank you. Rod, go.
Thank you. Well, first, I'd like to really appreciate folks from the county joining us. You know, that, what I'd like to say, which is my primary thought here, is the county has been exemplary. It's, it's been a model for the nation. If you look at what was going on here and what was going on in New York and the actions we took, I think we're all beginning to really appreciate the leadership here that drove much of what happened in the Bay Area and really has helped us mitigate this, this crisis in a significant way. So from, from where I'm coming, and frankly, I really respect the county's, the actions they've taken, the leadership that they've shown, balance they've offered in, in helping us think about how to work with everybody. As you know, from a prior discussion about whether we ought to do our own moratorium and so forth, I choose to say that I think in these matters, as the county has shown exemplary leadership, we should simply let them own this rather than coming up with our own thing. I think it creates some confusion. Stephen, you mentioned last night, the Home Depot. Well, guess what? The Home Depots in San Jose, as our, the Trader Joe's that our residents go to are in other cities. So I would prefer to see us simply abide by the orders as the, the county of Santa Clara deems to see fit. I think it's an act of respect to, to say, you know, hey, county, you've done, of all the counties in the United States, and among those governments in the world, you've, you've done far better than most. And we are going to, out of respect for the fact that we're all in a lifeboat together and you're demonstrating great leadership, let's let the county own this and decide if these orders are, are appropriate. I mean, I could make arguments on the merits, but I think that's my, that's my primary one. If it's an administrative citation, I think when we started this discussion, Deb, there was concern that the sheriff would have to be, would be legally obligated to enforce an ordinance. Are you suggesting that that's not the case?
I actually, he can also enforce an administrative citation. However, that's not the first step. If we see somebody that, or get a complaint, it's all about education and handing them a, handing them a face covering. That's, that's the main approach. That's actually the goal. I couldn't do it with nothing. I couldn't, well, I could have. But then we really have no teeth. But this was something that I thought would be a nice compromise. So Captain Uranus online if he, you know, if you'd like for him to respond on his own behalf.
Yeah, I would, because I think if we pass an ordinance that has an administrative citation, and there's an expectation that we're, we're enforcing what we do, that, I mean, my, my concern about it is, it's not much, there's not much meaning to it if we don't, you know, if we say, well, we're just gonna let it slide. I don't, I don't get it. Captain Uranus, do you have a comment?
Yeah, good evening, Mayor Sharp, members of the council. So as, as everyone, everyone is aware, the public health order was issued March 16th of this year. And so what we've seen since then is a decrease in calls for service in the city of Cupertino. So I looked at some of the data to see how this order would affect our response. And what I noticed was, in 2018, we had during the timeframe of March 16th through April 21st, we had 4,244 calls for service. Okay? Okay? That same time period last year, 2019, 4,363 calls for service. And so far this year, that exact same timeframe, March 16th through April 21st, 2,910 calls for service. So about a 33% or so decrease in calls for service in the city of Cupertino. And so, you know, we're spending a lot of time checking our businesses that are closed, checking schools, checking neighborhoods. So this, this ordinance would certainly be something that we would respond to. Again, as our city manager Deb Fang mentioned, our goal would be to educate the residents, the visitors on the ordinance to provide them with face covering. We did get a few hundred from the city that we would be giving to residents that aren't wearing a face covering. So the impact to our office, again, keeping in mind that we had a 33% decrease in calls for service is unknown. However, I do feel that it is something that we could respond to and educate our residents on.
Okay, thank you. Darcy, do you want to weigh in?
Mayor, I, I was not finished.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
I still have questions.
All right, go.
Sorry. An administrative citation, what, what, what penalty would a resident receive for violating this ordinance, our visitor?
Let's see. Sorry, I closed the staff report, but something.
I have it, Deb. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers. The penalty would be, if it were issued, would be a hundred dollars for the first violation, $200, I believe for the, or second violation. And, and.
500.
500 for the third and subsequent violations within a 12 month period.
Yeah. So, once again, I think the county has reasoned this through. They've shown exemplary readers, leadership. And where I'm coming from, I think we ought to align and defer to the county and not create more confusion by, by making ourselves the special case in the county. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Darcy, it's your turn.
Hi, thank you. I, you know, position wise, I support this. I think that it will make us safer and hence healthier. I do have a question. And that is on the very first one, I think starts out really well. It says something to the effect that children ages two and under might be subject to suffocation and must not wear these face coverings. But then it goes on to expand the exception to a degree by stating that children 12 and under do not have to wear the face covering, but there's no rationale provided for that. And I'm wondering what that is? And if there really isn't an articulated one, then I wonder whether it makes more sense to leave that out. And if there is one, then I would recommend that in any official document that we release, if this is passed, that we provide that rationale so that people know why it would become an optional matter under 12 years old. So I guess my question is why is there.
An exception?
Right, under, under 12.
Katie, do you have any information on that?
So in my research and looking at other, the other counties and throughout California, it looks like the age specifically when you start requiring a face mask can vary. Some were six years old, some were 12 years old, some simply stated the two-year-old requirement, like you mentioned. We chose to, our rationale as the city, we chose to follow the Santa Clara County guidance, which does include a 12-year-old age and then as well, as well as the other five counties that do have that same exception. It's, I have not researched it, but it's likely that this has to do with them being able to manage the face mask on their own and at what age and capability of the child there, they can do that safely.
Yeah, I, I don't know that that is really complete in terms of the reason why we would enact this, which is that we want to make sure that potential carriers aren't disseminating the, the virus. So I think for that, I would, I would want to have a little bit more reasoning provided, especially if we're basically saying, hey, look, we believe as a policy matter that it would be a good idea, like these surrounding counties have decided to require that people wear face masks or some kind of protective covering over their faces and over their mouths while they're outside, but without really providing a reason why we have an exception for a particular group. You know, particularly the ones mentioned here because there is a rationale provided for 200. I think that it might make sense to, to delete that exception unless we can actually understand what the rationale is. I, I mean, I don't, I don't get a sense that, that particular age is less susceptible to, you know, being a carrier of the virus. So that's, that was really my only concern. I, I, I think that it is a good idea to do this. And, you know, without getting into a discussion about our governance structure, I mean, I, we're not, we're not really hierarchical. It, it's, it's a matter of, you know, respecting other jurisdictional rights. And as the mayor pointed out last night, we can, we can become more stringent. We simply can't, under the rules, become less stringent than what the requirements are if county issues a countywide requirement or similarly the state issues a state, statewide requirement. So that would be my suggestion. I, I support this as written. I, I have a question regarding the 12 years or younger and over two exception. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Darcy. And I think I should point out, I mean, if this order goes into effect, this is not something we're writing. The city manager, as she sees fit, you know, can modify this to include the reasoning for that exception or, or delete that exception. So I will go now, I have a little presentation here. If I can get this shared. Okay, let's see if this, can you see this? Can it? Okay, I don't know why it started at the end. Okay. So the first map is, this is a face covering requirement by Bay Area County. You can see Sonoma, Marin, Contra Costa, Alameda, San Francisco, San Mateo. They all have some sort of requirement. It's not exactly the same in each county, but in Santa Clara County, we have none. So if you looked at Tuesday's, Tuesday's numbers yesterday, this is a headline from Mercury News. California has not flattened the curve and mask orders go into effect as Bay Area deaths and new cases rise, except in our county. And that was a headline from the Mercury News. And I don't know, I'm sure everyone knows, we have the most confirmed cases and the most deaths in the Bay Area of any of the counties. And yet we're one of the few jurisdictions in the region to hold off on having any kind of mandatory mask order. And we have a disproportionate number of deaths compared to our population, 7.1% of the deaths, but we're 4.9% of the population. Jeff Smith, there was an article about the Stanford study, which was kind of controversial, stating that there's far more people infected than the testing has revealed. You know, they're doing antibody testing. And the conclusion was asymptomatic people are spreading and that 95% of the population is still susceptible. And this is how I feel. Over, you know, we are not overreacting. We are trying, we're not quite at the surge yet. You know, we're probably just where this diagram shows, we're, you know, we're still having more cases and more deaths. But we really don't want to be up on that brown line. We, we want to do whatever we can to try to flatten it. This is what Darwin says, you didn't know that he weighed in on this, but, you know, it's, except it's not, it's not really okay because when you don't wear a face covering, you can spread the disease to regular people. And if you've seen the video, just talking, they did a, a video of just talking and the amount of things coming out of your mouth with and without a face covering was, you know, was quite, quite amazing. And here's another article, people might be spreading it just by talking and breathing. And as Deb pointed out, we're not talking about any draconian enforcement here. It's just, you know, we're enabling businesses to inform customers that face coverings are required to enter. You know, if in the unlikely event a customer started arguing, they're not going to be arrested and thrown in jail. An administrative citation is the greatest penalty and even that is unlikely. As Captain, as the captain said, it will not be, the sheriff's department won't be burdened. And what I see around, and Rod, you're right, Home Depot's in San Jose, but on the border. In fact, in today's West Valley Mayor's meeting, the mayor of Saratoga insisted it was in, Home Depot's in Cupertino, but it is not. But so what I noticed and I looked and I counted, about 50% of the customers in the store were wearing a face covering and about 80% of the staff was wearing them. So, you know, 80% is okay for the staff. I think 50% indicates that it being voluntary is just not sufficient. And, and the other issue with compliance, with enforcement, you know, there's a lot of laws on the books that people obey just because they make logical sense. And even though they know the likelihood of getting caught and fined or imprisoned is, is pretty small. And I think this is one of those cases where, you know, it just helps inform people how critical it is that we really need to stop the rate of transmission. And I, I just don't believe that a voluntary, a voluntary face mask wearing or face covering wearing is, is getting the message through at this point. And I think we can set an example. I think if we do this and other cities I've talked to are considering it as well, and if we do it and another city does it, Santa Clara County may follow the best practices of the other Bay Area counties if we act responsibly. And there's no downside. If it doesn't work, we can remove the requirement. So that's how I feel. I'll close this. And anyone else? Now Heather, I'm not sure, are we, are we voting on this or is this just for the city manager to get an idea of how the council feels?
Yes, you would be voting on it. The, the Cupertino municipal code requires that any city manager emergency order be confirmed by council. And so we are seeking that confirmation in advance with the understanding that the order would be based on the five other county health orders that have been issued and with the terms as we've described.
Okay.
I noticed Councilmember Willie has his hand up.
Okay, and Councilmember Chow. Okay, go ahead, Liang.
Hi. So, yeah, I think I agree with Darcy. Maybe we shouldn't exempt children under 12. May, I wonder maybe other counties are exempting them because they have stronger enforcement. Maybe they don't want to cite the children. But maybe we can leave that out so that it's implied that they should also wear too. And I think the second point is Cupertino is a very small city. A lot of the commercial strip shops that our residents visit are right around the border and they belong to San Jose or Sunnyvale or Santa Clara. So us requiring it is great, but it's really not enough. So I wonder if the county can, I wonder if also we can help encourage commercial businesses around us to also adopt this policy. But maybe it should start from the county. Maybe we should identify, for example, fast mask required business, they have a sign. And then people would, I would feel more comfortable going into a business with that sign that other employees, the customers are required to wear a mask. Maybe another business has mask preferred, then, then we know that, okay, at least they are preferring masks. And a business that doesn't have any sign, well, then that kind of will get everyone try to get in line and without actually enforcing. But then you offer the signs to people. So I wonder if Cupertino can offer this kind of sign that even businesses around us can elect to put on, then to give people some assurance, this is their store policy. Because every time I go into somewhere, I, I wonder, are the employees wearing the mask or before I go in? I, I don't know, but the first time going, it's always, oh, how is everyone doing? If there is a sign, that would be really helpful and job business.
Okay, I, I just want to point out, my next door neighbor today was in Palo Alto and tried to go into a store to buy something that his wife sent him to buy. And he was not wearing a mask and the store said, no, you can't come in, you can't come in without a face covering. And it's like, well, wait, the face coverings aren't required by law. It's like, and the business has no, but, but we require them.
Yeah.
And so it's creating confusion to not have a countywide ordinance like that.
Yeah, but having that sign, maybe a business can then point and say.
Right, I agree.
We, we, we are doing this.
Okay, John, did you have a hand up? Go.
So, a couple comments about the details. So providing we pass this ordinance, so I think we need to take the responsibility to do several things. One is we definitely need to make it very clear on our website and possibly have a flyer printed up and available for distribution so that the details of this, this ordinance are, are clear. What happens if you get the citation, first, second, third, the face mask? Details would also include where to purchase the face masks. I was out today and I had seen that when I went to get the mail at the post office and a store had a sign up that said that they have the mask. So I actually went in with my mask on to see what they had. And so if I back up a little bit, I, I think the, the flyer and the website should say where to get these masks.
Face coverings.
Face cover, coverings. And should also have some type of a guidance for the paper ones. While some people may, may make their own out of cloth and may wash them in the laundry, when I think we see that the vast majority are the disposable type. And so I think we need to provide the information in terms of how long is a disposable one intended to be used? Is it truly a single use for the whole day, for several days? I think there should be some guidance there that's not. And when there are some places that are offering to sell these masks, as Cindy, I think it was Cindy or Deborah said, I think Cindy, that it wasn't intended to be surgical grade because we don't want to divert the important one. The store that I went in today, they were blue. They were individually packaged by the store, small store. And I think they buy the, the little plastic sleeves, if you will, for selling their merchandise. And so I think they take the boxes of 50 or 100 and then they put them in the packages.
Right.
One at a time. And so I think there could be some counterfeit because they're not sealed with a 3M mark on it. And so I, I'm a little concerned that there could be some, some incorrect masks, you know, being made available. So those are. So those are some considerations that, to me, putting the ordinance out sounds good, but I want to make sure that, I, I think we should make sure the, the details that support it are in place in our community.
Yeah, I think those are good ideas. And like you, I've been, I was at one store last week and they were selling, they had the KN95, which are the, that's the Chinese version of the N95, as well as the single-use masks. So they're bringing them in and in large quantities from China. And yeah, I don't know, I mean, we don't really have the resources to start evaluating how effective the different masks that are being sold are. We can, we can provide information on our website, how to make masks. I don't think we can get into evaluating the different masks being sold by all the different stores.
Yeah, we're not the experts. The other thing to answer Councilmember Willie's previous concern about the use and instruction of, say, these kind of masks is that we would go by the manufacturer's recommended use, which is single or daily use. But, you know, if you're not, if I'm only using this to go in and out of my office and I wear them in my office if there's people there, then I would probably not use this more than one day, for more than one day.
Well, I think officially they say four hours for the disposables. You know, there, there is, and there's ways to disinfect them too, but, you know, putting them under UV light, but I think the cloth coverings are really sufficient. The, the video, I saw the laser video, showed people talking with a cloth face covering versus no face covering. I wish, wish I had brought that video here to play. It's quite, quite scary. Yeah, Leon.
Sorry, so I had three points earlier. I forgot one now I remembered. But first, first responding to John, I think we really should emphasize cloth face coverings. Let's not emphasize buy, go out and buy masks. And we should downplay the city donating masks to businesses because it kind of sends the wrong message that people should go out and buy masks. We should, when we are doing this, we should emphasize. CDC has a video of how to make it from Bendana. And there are easy ways to make it. So we need to put more emphasis on how to do it yourself. That way people don't, won't be urged to buy and you don't even know what you are buying. Okay, the second thing is, I read an article that actually did, someone did an analysis that if you are walking and then, but if you are walking right behind the person, their, their perspiration, there's, you are, you are walking behind a mist of their thing. And then if you are jogging behind, you are, you actually need to be much, you need to be longer than six feet wide. That kind of information, I think we need to get it out to people. Because when we go out to hiking, the recommendation is still six feet. Even when people are biking, the recommendation is still six feet. But when you are biking, the article I read, you need to be 25 feet away from another biker if you are right behind them. Otherwise, you are just riding right in through their thing, the mist. So, so I think we need, but wearing masks is the one, the, the thing that will help us, whatever activity you are doing. So maybe that kind of information needs to go out there. Just social distancing six feet may not be enough if you are doing a certain activities, like moving things, you are actually pers- are sweating.
Okay, is that it? Okay. Darcy, go.
I move that the Cupertino City Council confirm a proposed emergency order requiring face coverings for the public to slow the spread of COVID-19 with discretion provided to the city manager regarding requirements for children from ages three to 12, following further diligence on the reasoning behind this proposed exception in the staff report accompanying this agenda item, directing the city manager to conduct appropriate outreach to the community to ensure understanding of the requirement, including encouragement of the use of cloth masks in order to preserve availability of PPE for medical personnel as well as the existing social distancing requirements, and encouraging the city manager to communicate to the extent reasonably possible with neighboring jurisdictions in the county in order to both monitor and optimize the efficacious development of the requirement.
Okay.
I'll second.
Great, Madam City Clerk, can you conduct a roll call vote?
Councilmember Chow.
You have to unmute.
Um, I didn't do anything.
Okay, so you vote? Non, can you vote?
Hello?
Can you vote?
Hi.
Can you vote?
Can you hear me?
Yes, can you please vote?
I'd like to make a friendly amendment that we also notify businesses around Cupertino within, let's say, 500 to 1,000 feet, that we are, we are doing this so that they are aware. Okay, so, so that softly encourage them to also do the same thing. Okay, that's a friendly amendment to widen the notification area to beyond Cupertino.
I will accept the friendly amendment, adding the word business, I'm sorry, adding the words and businesses after neighboring jurisdictions. I will go ahead if you like to re-read this or I can just send the entire-
No, I'll, I'll second the amendment, okay?
Okay.
Okay, Madam City Clerk, now can you conduct the roll call?
So for this, including the friendly amendment, Councilmember Chow?
Yes, including the amendment.
Councilmember Chow?
Aye.
Councilmember Sinks?
No.
Councilmember Willie?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Paul?
Yes.
Mayor Sharp?
Yes.
Motion carries with Sinks voting no.
Okay, great. So that is our only agenda item today. Thank you, everyone, for joining us today. And everyone, please stay safe. Meeting is adjourned. We can-